This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Wednesday, July 1st, 2021, meeting of the Monterey Select Board. As the first item is to meet with town council, we're going to, I move that we go into executive session to discuss litigation strategy, attorney-client privilege. After that, we will go back into public session. So I make a motion to move into executive session.
I have a question before you vote.
Yes.
Is the discussion going to include the complaint filed by Mr. Weingold?
I think it's going to include all litigation against the town of Monterey. Yep. The first, the first two cases are going to be with all three select board members and the third, the complaint that's filed that's not served will just be on the two select board members who aren't parties to the litigation.
Okay, but, but I'm also a party to that, Jeremiah. I'm a defendant in my position as a selectman. So can I be at that meeting as well?
You can be.
Okay, so will Melissa notify me when I can come into it, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, therefore I move into, without being, so I move that we move into executive session. Second, you don't say yes. Justin Makegood says yes. John Weingold?
Are you asking me my vote?
I am, that's, that's exactly what I'm doing.
Okay, I'm getting a lot of feedback from somebody. I don't think this falls under the executive.
I'm just asking you yes or no.
Well, that's, that's a no.
Fair enough, since it's two to one.
Give me a second.
Executive session, public is excluded from the session and we'll come back into public session.
First executive session.
Well.
Oh, no!
We, or one, second one. Oh, that's, that was emergency.
No, the executives, we had executive session, our personnel shoot.
And I'm going to stop recording.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so let me say it again for the, for the, the people who are going to listen to this at a later date. I, I made a motion to, to approve the special event, one-day permit, a one-day permit for beer and wine for the Monterey Fire Company for their annual steak roast. I did receive a second by Mr. Weingold. I opened it up for public discussion. There being none, I move that.
I had my hand raised.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
That's okay. I, I would just like to make sure that Fox Hill Road is not blocked. In the past, we've had a lot of problems with not being able to get out of our driveway.
So, so the chief, do we let the chief know about the events? Do they, do they monitor Fox Hill Road?
Never knew that was an issue, so.
Okay, so this is the first time we're hearing of it? We will.
Oh, well, that's why Scott, Scott Amstead puts up signs, "No parking past a certain point", you know, or he'll tow them and that.
He's granted permission to park on all Fox Hill Road.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Right.
Scott Amstead does not have an issue.
Okay, so, so I vote yes?
I vote yes.
Okay, and Justin's going to recuse himself. I'm going to sign it. Does it require an in-person signature?
I'm sure it'd be nice if John could come and sign it.
Uh, John, we need your signature on this document. Uh, okay, item B, Highway 4 appointment. Wow, you were able to find somebody?
Yes, surprisingly, we were.
Okay, we received a copy of the resume of this particular individual.
Tyler Collins.
Tyler Collins. I had a chance to read it. Looks, looks good to me. We were looking for, for somebody to fill that position for quite a while. I, I, my move that we hire Tyler Collins for Highway 4. Do I have a second?
Second.
There being a second, I open up for public comment. There being no public comment, I, I move that we hire Ty- Tyler Co- oh, sorry, what was his last name?
Collins.
Collins, Tyler Collins, for the position of Highway 4. I vote yes.
Justin Makegood, yes.
Justin Makegood, yes?
Yes.
Okay, John Weingold, yes. Item number 2C, the Curtis Road Bridge.
So update on that. I think over a year and I'll go. The state set up a meeting to discuss the Curtis Road Bridge and its entire replacement coming up in the future. Somehow they found funding to do that. I'm not quite sure how, but they did. They want to do it 100% so that way we can keep the Highway Department flowing in and out of Curtis Road along with Transfer Station and Gould Farm. So they've been in the design process for about a year now and they have come to me about detouring across Gould Road, also known as Lover's Lane. They would like to do that so that way they can expedite this project. They can take it from a two-to-three-year project and turn it into what they think is a one-season project. Starting approximately March 15th and ending December 1st. There's a bunch of logistical issues with turning the bridge into a one-lane bridge that covers many different areas of the, of the whole project itself. I don't have the specifics on that, but they can drastically save a bunch of money and time by detoring traffic. As we know, the Highway Department have to probably detour during the winter anyways because the bridge in Tarrington Road, Tarrington on the Monterey Road, the Highway Department cannot get across that with plows at this point. So, I mean, the bridges would be very similar in width. So already the Highway Department's at a is going to have issues there, so.
The costs involved in, because we, I was on the board when we had, when we studied this at one point and that, and that Gould Road is, is really only one lane wide.
One and a half lanes, yes.
Oh, one and a half lanes wide. And so, but it's my understanding, so the, so does it sound like they're going to try to do what they're doing in Tarrington right now? Where they're going to keep one lane open of, of a bridge, of the bridge while they work on the other lane and then switch over?
If they're not granted permission for the detour, yes, that's what they would do.
If they're not granted.
And they would spend approximately two to three years repent, doing the repair.
But, but if you, if, if it was completely closed off and, and all the work was done 100%, so there was no Curtis Road Bridge, then you'd have to, then Gould, either Gould Road would have to be widened to accommodate two, two lanes of traffic or you'd have to have that, that, that light system that is currently being implemented, which I understand is two years ago, it was about $8,000 a week.
It does, yeah, for the month or, yeah, it was a month rental for that. Yeah, so we would have to do some improving on this proposal. That proposal was for like a three or go a four-year event, a detour. This one, they're saying they can get it done in a season, or very close to being done in a full season. They might have to go into winter a little bit late, start early, work late, they're not sure, but we're talking one season instead of multiple seasons of pulling Highway Department trucks in and out of there.
And who's doing, who would be doing the construction? The state DOT?
They would bid it out to a Maximilian or Warner Construction out of that type of a construction company.
I'm not understanding, is it a season with the detour or a season with the one-way bridge?
It's a season with the detour. It's two to three years with the, with, without the detour, one-lane bridge.
And the, but the, but if you, if you just have a detour, so you're using Gould Road, Gould Road cannot accommodate two, a traffic coming in, in two directions currently. We, you know, we talked about this before, we could have, I mean, we'd have to have that little light thing, but you can get, you can get your, you, right now, the highway construction, all the highway trucks are be, are able to get down.
Yes, yeah, we use that relatively frequently.
Would, would we have to, what kind of improvements would we, would you believe that we would need to do on Gould Road in order to accommodate a, a detour scenario?
We could fill some of the road up, when, when we fill, we're going to widen just naturally, that's how it works. So that will gain us.
Would we fill it with, would we fill it with gravel or would it be, would there be a contemplation that part of it be have more of a pavement-type?
It would be filled first with gravel, yes. And then if it was, there was an issue or somebody thought it was going to be an issue, then it would have to be either oil-stoned or paved.
Okay, so.
I think there is a difference here between a one-season detour versus three winters of detouring over that one road.
Right, well, but I always, I always multiply state DOT's expectations by two. And because I, I've watched several projects take place in towns like Jeffield and, and such. So we always want to, we always want to, you know, we don't want, I don't want to really take them at their.
Yes, I, I, I do agree with you, but I will say that in our own construction projects that we do here in town, if you can close the road, you can typically shave a ton of time off. A one-week project closed is a three, four-week dealing with traffic.
100%, 100%, and, and I, no, I, I mean personally, it's going to be my own personal opinion, I would rather have the, you know, take the full pain for a shorter amount of time than, 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 than keep things partially open. But it's a tricky situation because you only really have two ways, two ways out of there. Well, you've got third way, but that, that road's impassable.
In the winter, yes, but all three are, Gould Road is open off completely through. Yes, it is one lane at the other end towards the Marwood Road. Wellman is also open summer, seasonal weather.
I wouldn't want to direct traffic down Wellman. Um, all right, so, and they, so they're going to, did they already put together a scope of the, of scope? And, and, and the, there's no, Monterey's, they're, this is, this is paid for by the Commonwealth?
Commonwealth or the federal government, one of the two or both.
Does that also include the, the, the traffic, the, these, these traffic things? I don't need them.
The detour?
There's contingent on a, a light system or something of that nature, then yes.
Well, we still have a one-lan, a one-and-a-half lane road unless we're willing to widen it, but we found last time when we, when we studied widening Gould Road, at that point, there were a lot of, there were trees on both sides. And so there was a fair amount of objection to, to actually, you widen, you'd have to lose some trees on once, on, on one side. And so that's been the, the primary objection to widening Gould Road.
I mean, they're not going to come in and put drainage in and just do the full workup, but I do believe they will supply the equipment appropriate to make the road safe.
Can we just hire Ken Bassler to put a bridge down? Susan Cooper has. Oh, I'm sorry, Susan, go on.
That's okay. It, it strikes me that widening the road has much more long-lasting consequences than the inconvenience for, even if we assumed it was twice as long as they're saying, let's call it two seasons, two years of one-way traffic on that section with a light. I mean, overall, it seems to me that that's, not only will it shorten the time to get the bridge repaired, but as far as long-term consequences to that section of road, they're much lighter. I mean, yeah, it's going to be more traffic, so there's going to be wear and tear on the road. Nevertheless, that, it still seems, the light seems a better solution than a widening of the road, to me.
But, but first of all, let's, let's get to the first, the first part of that, Susan, that, that's a good point. But is there, how does the board feel in a general consensus of the closure of Curtis Road and use Gould Road versus the half a lane, half a lane of Curtis Road and the longer period of, of construction?
Well, you know, it'd be nice to get some input from Gould Farm, since they're going to be impacted probably the most.
I mean. Right, my question is to, is to board members. This is not going to be decided right now, we're not going to, but, but, but that's a very good point, but I'm, I'm just, I'm just clearing the, the board members.
Well, I remember when all of 23 was going over Lover's Lane for a couple of weeks or whatever it was. And, but this will obviously be a lot less people, right?
Yes, by four, this is, our high-traffic-volume days will be Wednesday for Transfer Station, Saturday, Sunday. Besides that, there's not enough traffic to even have this discussion, just detour.
Yeah, but I think in general, it sounds like a really good idea to get the project done quicker, get back to our regular.
Because I, we, there could be an issue if we don't detour traffic of getting, number one, tractor trailers assault across the road, across the bridge and up Lover's Lane. We've had tractor trailers stuck over there on the road in previous years and had to deal with that, so there is other issues with going on a three-year term here.
Right. All right, John, any, any, any thoughts other than the, getting input from Gould Farm?
Well, yeah, I'd like input. Other than that, I think the quicker the better and, you know, I think the light is much more feasible for the town than widening a road and cutting down trees and just to, I think a light would probably work.
So, I, so I would, so I would say that it's a general consensus, the board sounds like the, the detour method is the best. I would, I would, they believe that we should push the Commonwealth to provide funds for any kind of traffic, mechanical traffic control, because that is incredibly expensive.
So I will relay that to them.
And the resurf, and the resurfacing or the preparation of Gould Road for the additional traffic, which may include drainage, temporary drainage if we need to, if we need to have something in there and it's the only way in and out, and it's, something's needed, if something's needed over there in advance, let's, I, I would say, and we could get it paid for by the Commonwealth, this would be a great opportunity to, to make some improvements you know, to that road and obviously, so we don't get into a situation where things will end up.
And the other thing right now is we can't get across Tarrington's bridge with the fire truck, so that would be a long haul going through Gould Farm, so, for three years.
Right, no, I, I, so I, I'm glad that the board concurs because I think, I think it's, it's good to get this whole thing done in one, in, in, in one fell swoop. And Curtis Road, the Curtis Road Bridge has, I mean, I, I see the conditions and we, we, we made a repair, which I think extended its life, but I, I do see that, that it's, that it's just not, it needs to be done. Yes. Okay, uh, and by the way, while I have you here with the board's indulgence, I just want to make sure that, Sean, how did we do during, we had three days straight of flooding or rain and a lot of towns had a lot of damage. How did Monterey do?
Monterey did relatively well, considering on a scale of one to 10, we're at a three damage rate. Some minor washouts along the edges here and there. Pretty much every road was affected to some degree or another, but it's not, we didn't take a huge hit. There was only one road closure for 24, 36 hours before we got that straightened out, was relatively minor. Yeah, spots that usually wash out didn't and I think between having a little less rain and our diligent work of the guys that we kept drainage open and water flowing, so I think we did well. And we're still probably going to spend $10,000 to $20,000 on repairs and a couple of weeks' worth of work, but I'll take that over roads washed out four to six feet deep and drainage completely gone, so.
Well, I, I, I think a lot of it has to do with our, our, our covert work and our upkeep to the drainage that, that, that we do here in Monterey and, and this proves that we're, we're doing it correctly.
They were getting sick of it, doing it, but we spent two and a half weeks or so every day checking drainage and making sure things were functioning, so that's what they've been doing.
Good, okay. Terrific. Thank you, Sean. Anything else? Do you have anything else?
You have anything else for me?
Yeah, questions about the fire department last week. Does anybody have any lingering issues?
Oh, okay, since, since Sean's, since Sean's here and he's also a fire chief, anybody have any questions for him as chief or as, as director of operations? No?
What?
What were you talking about last week?
I'm sorry, last meeting. John had some concerns about what the firemen do on their on-call nights and hiring people from out of town. I didn't know.
The appointment of Brian Dylan.
If he didn't want to ask the chief exactly what they do up there.
Anybody else for time to talk to the chief?
Do you, do you want us to get an order?
I can, sure, if you have the time. So we started our shift program for over a year now. Two guys there almost every night of the week, shoot for seven nights a week, but we don't always fulfill that much. They show up, they do a truck check at 5:30 and go through one truck per night and document any issues, fix any issues. And then they go on to training from there. Truck check is, is making sure the fuel's full, lights work, chainsaws run, any hydraulic-powered tools, just your standard check. SCVAs are ready to go, air bottles are full and all our medical gear is up to snuff. After that, they go into some training, which goes from anywhere from a half hour to two hours, depending on what they're covering for the night. Sometimes that involves as simple as YouTube videos, watching movies and learning that way. There's a lot to be learned that way. And then they do their household chores for the station, cleaning, sweeping, vacuuming, wiping toilets down. And then they are free to have dinner and do as they please and go to bed, do their homework, watch movies, so. That's how the night goes there and they respond to any calls from 5:30 to 5:30 and they've been doing a fair amount, would like to have some more, but you can't create calls, so.
The newer firefighters, are, where are they, are they, are they all coming from Monterey? Aren't any of them coming from Monterey?
So, no, not really. We've generated much more interest within the Monterey guys, at least a select group of them. There was a couple looking to retire and it brought, it brought them back and got them more serious back into the fire department, which has worked out for the town and the department greatly. We brought three in from the outside, which they were all lacking proper training greatly. And we've been working with all three of them for different lengths of time now and they're coming along nicely and proving to be very worthy for the town, so at least if Pedro goes off, you're going to have somebody show up at your door when you're, when you're having an issue, so. Things are going well. It can always be better. We're improving all the time, I think anyways. When I don't have people up there, there's a knot in my stomach to what's going to happen that night and am I going to get somebody to show up or not, so. It's a good feeling to have somebody backing us up, so.
Okay, so you're still actively recruiting?
Still actively recruiting. Would like to come up with a few more people. It'd be great if we could get some in-town people involved. Anybody knows anybody, send them up. Be happy to have them.
Good. Anybody from the public?
We did have one firefighter join. They weren't anything to do with fire departments prior and they've spent a year busting their butts, training, and they have come. This program is what has got them to the point of being able to do the job safely. Growing them, frankly, so I think it's working really well.
The highway guy that we just appointed, I see he's on his resume, he was, is he going to be a part of the fire department as well?
Yes, he is, at, at least during the daytime, he will, so. With minimal staffing, daytime, he will, if it works out in the schedule, he will. Obviously, if we have a trench dug across the road and traffic blocked, we can't allow him to go, but if it works out, he will respond.
How many people are on the department now, total?
We're in the 18 to 20 range right now. We're in the 18 to 20 range right now. Some don't participate much and some participate in everything, daytime and night, depending on schedules and how serious they are about it.
That's typical highway department, of fire departments in this area.
It's a countrywide issue, yes. Manpower staffing is.
Okay, um, great. Let's, let's, let's continue. Thank you Sean for coming. I feel like, I feel like I'm the host of the most boring talk show ever. Onto a commercial, no. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
And the most particular, as much, as many particulars as we can, this Curtis Road project, as we, as we get them, we're gonna share them with the public. To get everybody, everybody's gonna have plenty of advance notice before this, this project.
As we know, with anything, government takes a long time, so.
Yes.
They're in the development stages right now.
Oh, so, so this might not happen in my lifetime.
No, it's going to, it's going to, the money's in place for it, so.
Okay, well, that's, well, at least the money's in place for it. Okay, good, so, so item number three, the permanent conservation agent appointment, Mary Struckland. So I did receive a, I believe the board received an email from the conservation commission asking that the, that the temporary conservation agent be appointed as, as a permanent conservation agent. And I, I, at the individual, I think they're, they seem to be capable and, and again, the conservation commission feels that they're appropriate. So therefore I make a motion to, to appoint Mary Struckland as the permanent conservation agent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Open up for discussion.
Yeah, did, did the conservation commission actually vote to appoint her permanently? Did they have a vote at an open meeting or they just sent us an email?
I believe that the email said that they had a vote, but let's, let's. Let's check over here, I don't.
I don't remember that.
It doesn't say that they voted.
Okay, well, that's par for the course. Okay.
Why would we par for the course?
Should have voted, I think, but that's fine.
Well, would you like to table it for the next meeting and we'll get confirmation that they voted for it? I wouldn't want to do anything that's, that's not, that's not correct.
I don't even know if that's required, but it seems to me, I mean, I, I don't know. Just the concern I have doesn't mean she shouldn't be appointed. I just don't want anything to come back in the future, but I think we should, you know.
So, so then maybe, so then, so then why don't we, so why don't we table it until, until we have confirmation that they actually voted? I think that's a prudent way to go.
Okay.
Right? Justin, do you have an, do you have an opinion on this?
I have nothing to add.
Okay, so what we're gonna do is we're going to, she's still gonna be working as a temporary conservation agent, so we're not going to be losing her services. And we will, I'll put that on the agenda for the next time and the new time the town, we'll have the town administrator reach out to the chair of the conservation commission for, for confirmation that they actually have voted to name her, so that there's no, um, there's, there's no possibility of miscommunication.
Thank you.
Okay, the, uh, item number four, the BRPC representative appointment of Laura Mancy. So I think it's great that we have somebody to, to represent us at the virtual regional planning commission. So therefore I move that we appoint Laura Mancy as the, as a representative to the BRPC. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, open up to the public? Anybody wanna wish her good luck? No? All right, so there being no public comment, I move that we appoint Laura Mancy to the thing, I vote yes.
Yes.
Justin votes yes.
I vote yes.
John votes yes. We're unanimous. Okay, town administrator items, of course, are you done chucking?
Let's see, first thing, I sent you guys this amendment for the handbook adding Juneteenth as a holiday.
Yes, well, Juneteenth has actually, has been recognized by the federal government as a holiday, that two days after we did, so we actually are ahead of them. So I, yeah, so, well, we already agreed that it's an official holiday.
Yes, but I amended the handbook to include it, so I just want you guys to approve the amendment.
I see, okay, so I move to approve the amend, the amendment to the, to the employee handbook to include Juneteenth as an official holiday. Do you have a second?
Second.
A second, I'll open up to public comment. There being none, then I move that we, that we accept the amendment of, of, in the employee handbook to include Juneteenth as the official holiday. I say yes.
I vote yes.
And John says yes, okay, perfect. The next is the 2004 F-50, F-550. We, as you know, we received the, the right through town meeting to, to sell it. We put it on, out.
So we previously voted on this, it, it was a winning bid, but the person never paid us, so we had to put it back out to bid, this is the new winning bid.
Okay, so there's entirely new round. Okay, how much should we receive for this Ford F-550?
Fifty-nine hundred.
Okay, was that, was that more or less than, than we go?
It's a little bit less.
It's a little bit less than.
First bid was sixty-four hundred.
I see, but they never came and paid us, so.
They wouldn't respond to anything, they've actually been blocked from using the site now and going forward.
Very good, okay, so, uh, great, so I, so I move that we accept the $5,100 high bid for the 2004 F-550.
Second.
Second. Anybody, anybody in the public wanna say anything? Susan, you wanna, you wanna bid higher, now's the time, no, okay. Therefore, I move, so I say yes? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, good, free, uh, item C, draft assistant town clerk job description and help wanted ad. There was a discussion at select, a select board meeting, I believe, two select board meetings ago that to, to, to come up with a idea for a, for a proposal for, for having an assistant town clerk. Put out a help wanted ad to see if one would be available. Has everybody read the, the job description?
Yeah.
Have any, any comments on it?
I, like I said at the last meeting, I wanna make sure that we just work with the clerk and find out what works for her. Because I think the clerk's office under Terry has done a very good job and I haven't really heard it much of any, haven't heard any complaints. And I've heard really good things about the office, that it's been productive and getting thing, getting done everything they need to get done and good to work with. So I just wanna make sure that the town clerk, you know, as long as Terry is doing a good job, she should, you know, be the, more or less the final say, although the select board is the official final say. But I think, you know, if there's an employee or an, an office that's doing a really good job, let's work with them and make sure they get what they want. And it seems to me like, I, it seems to me like this job description might interfere with the current help in the town clerk's office, which seems to be doing a very good job. And so I wouldn't wanna infringe on an office that's doing a really good job.
So in the past, our search, so first of all, I would, I would agree with you that I believe the clerk, clerk is, the clerk is doing a good job. And this has nothing to do with an assessment of how the clerks, how the clerk is doing. The, the impetus for this search has been that we did have, we did have an individual that, that needed some assistance. And when the clerk was not available, on vacation and that the current folks that are in the office don't have the ability to log into the, the system and take care of what somebody, what our town resident needed. So this is not, and this is no fault of the clerks at all, but the idea is that we have in the past have had an assistant, an assistant town clerk who has been, who has the, the proper certifications to use the state machine so that we can serve the public when the, when, when the clerk is not available. And again, this is not usurp the activities of the, of the clerk, of the town clerk at all. This is in addition to, not only this, I.
Well, I, I, you keep speaking, sir.
Okay, well.
I just think there's two things which you're saying which are hard for me to comprehend. Which is that the position is for seven hours, thirteen fifty hour. And the people who are currently working for the clerk are working. And it seems like that would take up the budget that's set aside for the people who are currently working for the clerk. And so I don't know how this wouldn't infringe to some degree on, on the people who are currently working for the clerk, because it seems to take away from that budget. And the other thing is, I think, and I said this last time you brought up the incident of, of someone looking for the clerk when the clerk was on time off. I don't think that was an issue that was, needed to be dealt with that week, I think it could have waited a week. And I have no reason to, I said that before and I still believe it, that it was a matter of, of financial, financials after, you know, a family member passes away, which is not something that's gonna happen immediately regardless. I don't think it was an urgent thing and, and I really, I really don't think it was an urgent thing. So that seems to me to be not a prob, a real problem. Some people are saying it's a problem, I don't think it, it was a problem. And if that, if my understanding is true, why would we fix a problem that's, that's not there? And I don't understand how this doesn't infringe on the people who are working in the clerk's office, because it seems to take away a huge chunk of the budget that's set that currently people, and I worked in the clerk's office before I was in the select board too, so I, a few, a few hours, many more hours, but. This seems like there's all so much money, are we gonna have a special meeting to fund this position as well as the current?
Well, obviously, we wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to, we wouldn't be able to pay somebody with funds that don't exist. So the, you know, the challenge, it, it, the challenge is to, is to allow the clerk's office to be accessible by the residents of Monterey as much as possible, by the most, by the most talented people possible, the people, and the people that can use the state machine, which I understand takes a certain certification and I understand that the, that the, that the current help does not have access to, does not have access to that. Am I correct?
You're correct, he's, Gary has never asked for a password, but I put my password in and he can go in and he scans things.
Okay, so by the way, for the public's application, we have the town clerk and we have Gary Shaw, thank you for coming, to, to participate in this conversation.
I just really, I really don't think that there are situations where we need someone who can access the, the computer. That's my understanding, we don't need someone who can access the computer. Emergencies, there, it doesn't seem to me there are things done in the clerk's office in that sense that need to be done and can't, can't wait a week. So to me, it does, it seems like we're solving a problem that doesn't exist. And potentially, potentially not letting a good employee and good employees who work under her continue in the situation that has been working really well for the town. I, it just doesn't make any sense to me, why we would wreck a good situation because of a problem that isn't a real problem. If we're having complaints about the town clerk that I thought were legitimate, I would very much consider solutions, you know, but in my view and from all the people I've spoken to, the town clerk's office is, is in really good shape and really good to work with. And what gets done in there between Terry and Gary and Evelyn is, is, is a good problem.
So the first thing I'll ask is, Gary, since you're here, I can ask Evelyn, because she's not here. Have you any, do you have any interest in, in becoming the assistant town clerk?
Not for $13.50, I don't. That's not the going rate for town clerk as an assistant town clerk. So if you actually wanna hire somebody to be an assistant town clerk, the budget would have to be changed dramatically.
But let me this way, so, so let, let's, let's not talk about the money for a second here.
Okay.
Do you have, do you have an interest in becoming the assistant town clerk and getting certification necessary to have your own password?
Yeah, I could see myself doing that.
But I'm asking that question. I'm sorry, it sounds like, Terry. Is it advantageous to have somebody, how, how do we? Listen, the job is, all of our jobs is to serve the people of Monterey, right? Good times, bad times, vacation, dark of night, whatever. I think that we're doing a fine job, this has nothing to do with your job, okay? This is trying to find resources for people in town when you may not be avail, when you are not available.
Well, at times they call me at home or text me and I meet them here, so it's, I'm, I'm always available as needed. When I went to the cake, I planned that six months ago.
That's okay, so Justin alluded to the fact that, that, that this is, that this, the certificate, the death certificate that we needed, that a resident need to obtain or.
Wanted to obtain.
Wanted to obtain, okay. Is a, is a, is a very unique circumstance.
It is, because usually the funeral director mails me the check and I mail funeral power the death certificates. So the funeral director said he would never give the check to the family member again, because that was, that's what happened. They mailed the check to me, I mailed his death certificates, or they stop and pick them up, the funeral director. So that is, that, that time, I don't know why he gave them to the person and I don't know why he told her that he had spoken to me, because he hadn't, so there was a lot of confusion and it's resolved. He will never give a check to the, the family member again, so that's resolved.
Yep, I'm sorry, Carrie.
I'm, I'm just wondering why this is an issue for the clerk's office and it's not an issue, you know, you're not planning on doing this for every office in town hall. You know, the tax collector, the town administrator, the building inspector, the, you know, what happens when they go on vacation?
Well, actually, the building inspector does have an assistant, but, but no, that's, that's actually, that's actually a very good point. This is not direct, I'm, I'm sorry if it comes off as directed at the clerk's office, it's really, it's really not. It's, but it, it, it just, this recent incident highlighted the fact that somebody needs to go, that I understand this is not a dire emergency. However, it, the, the fact that there's only one person available that has the credentials to use the state computer.
This is not the state computer, this is the vitals computer, that has nothing to do with the one that has, has three passwords in it. There's two sets, there's two computers in there, so my name is on the death certificates, I'm the only one that can steal it, so that's what the question is. But the death certificates can wait three days, sometimes it's ten days before they pick them up. It's only for financial institutions, you know, wills and things like that. The lady had, you know, everything had been settled with the bill, with the burial permit, so. I, it's like.
Okay, now let me ask you another, let me just ask you another question because there's, so there's, there's myriad of reasons why. You had an assistant town clerk at one, at one point, didn't you?
I had Megan. I would do just like.
You're over there in the audience, turn off your mic.
Town clerk has access, you know, to death certificates, vital records, some of the records, I'm the only one that can see especially. I'm with mothers.
Okay.
But Megan did, you know, dog licensing like, like Gary would do and scanning in voters in the state computer. I, it's, it's worked out fine the way it is.
Okay. Then let me ask, then let me ask you just one more question and then I'll, I'll, I'll drop it. How long does it take to train somebody to become a town clerk?
Well.
Twenty years?
At least, I mean, if they, like I've gone to training for about ten years. In the beginning, someone from the state would come into town when I was a town clerk. And every once a week, they would work eight hours training me on the, it's called the rest, the vital record, no, no, the, the one with the census and voters. So every day I had, every week I had eight hours of training for four years.
Okay.
So it's a, it's a, a lot of work.
Gary, do you have an, do you have an intention, would you like to be town clerk someday?
I don't know. I don't, I don't, I haven't made any decisions.
So you know, I'm getting with this, one of the other reasons why towns have an assistant town clerk is that if, if the clerk, the clerk envisions themselves retiring after a certain period of time, they're going to need a certain amount of time to train that, that individual to, to assume their position. I mean, right, Terry?
Yes, but Gary, if he's the assistant, he could train the clerk because he's been in this office for over three years. So my assistant, my assistant could train a new town clerk. Especially if that person got the training they needed and he was masked and, you know, the trainings. It just takes a while, but he's got the gist of it of everything.
What happens when our tax collector retires or assessor? I mean, there's always a transitional period, right?
We have an assistant, then we have an assistant assessor.
The tax collector's elected, so it wouldn't matter.
But I, but I mean, it will be a little bit tough on the town when we go from one tax collector to another, right? There's a transitional period, I imagine with any, I mean, anyone who works anywhere. You get a new, any one and it seems like there's some, I mean, you want to make that less than that burden as much as possible. But I don't think that's unique to the clerk.
I'm not saying it's unique to the clerk. I'm just talking to the clerk because the clerk's here.
Yeah, I just don't.
We're just, we're, we're only talking about the, right, I, I understand that and I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm, listen, I'll, I'll look. Well, the tax collector is elected, so that, that's the, but the assessor, the assessors are very, see, an assessor is an interesting point. But we don't have the assessor here, so just right now we have three people that work in the clerk's office here.
I'm an assessor.
Okay.
I'm on the board of assessors.
But does he?
So the board of assessors are supposed to know what the principal assessor does. So essentially if Don Clausen were to leave, one of the three assessors would know how to continue the job. So there is coverage in the office.
So that's the point, that's the point of this whole thing is to continue coverage for the people of Monterey. It's not, first of all, it has nothing to do with anybody's performance. It is just, how do we continue to have coverage for, 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 for the people in Monterey?
Well, Terry's already told us what she wanted and she was asked to be put on the agenda and then this popped up on the agenda. But I, this is not an urgent matter. Terry's not retiring next month or in three months or in six months. This is a three-year, I mean, there's no reason to hire an assistant when we have two capable people working in the office. I mean, I, I don't, this is like a solution looking for a problem. I, I don't understand why this is even being brought up. She already told us what she wanted. She wanted to keep Gary in Valiados, I mean.
I'm sorry, we're, we're being distracted by uh, something going on over here. I'm sorry.
So are you saying that the office, that I should have more hours in the office? Is that what you're saying? There should be more?
No, 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 Terry, Terry, I'm just.
Well, yes, I, I totally agree with that. There's no town in this county that has an eighteen-hour a week town clerk.
So, so what would be your, what would, what would be your solution, Terry?
My solution?
Get as much coverage for the, for the people in town.
Well, if you want me more hours, I can do that.
I'm saying that you're, you're, I'm assuming that at some point you've been taking vacations and, and whatever. How do we get coverage when you're away?
Well, before, when I had Gary in there, I was told that when I'm gone, I close the office just like Melissa does. So that's why I, when I, I mean, I.
So your recommendation is to keep Gary and?
To keep Gary and Evelyn and there's other people that are possibly could work in there, you know, for me, like during census, I always have people doing census and.
Yeah, can Gary be, can, can, Gary says that he's open to being trained to be able to?
The census?
No, to, to get into some of these machines? Is there a certain certification that he needs?
Oh, no, no. He, he can have access to, to the, he, he has to go to the state and request a password. But up until now, he would let me use mine because I would oversee them.
But, right.
He doesn't need a certification to get in them and, and work in those. Megan didn't have one.
Shouldn't be, shouldn't he be operating under his own? Sorry to talk back to you like you're not here.
Yeah. I, I'm just bewildered because when I worked in the town clerk's office, we did a lot, or it seemed like there was a lot of really important things, keeping track of who's in town, where are the dogs, who died, who was born? But none of it, that's like, you need to call an ambulance. Like if we had an ambulance and it's not staffed and people are showing up and they're not making calls, that's one thing. But it seems to me like all the things, while they are very important, are not a, a matter of minutes. Like it might be on the fire department or ambulance, let alone a matter of days. I mean, a week or two.
Justin, what would be the downside if, if Gary had his own password?
I'm not opposed to, you know, different, different things. But I do not think that it's urgent or necessary to, to make these kinds of changes. I, I really don't.
But I just.
That's just my opinion.
It, it seems, it seems that Gary's great, sorry again, we're talking about you while you're in the room there. But it, it seems that Gary's very, is interested in, in, in stepping up his presence in the, in the clerk's office. And, and would be willing to, to take on additional responsibilities that may or may not be used. Well, I, so why not, since we do have somebody here who's obviously very interested in, in, in again, providing any, any additional assistance that we can provide the people of Monterey is always a positive thing. I don't think, I don't think it denigrates from, from the current arrangement at all. As a matter of fact, it, it actually, it just fortifies the current arrangement. That, that's the only point that I'm making. And I understand it, these, none of these things are emergencies, but you know what? That particular individual, I understand that was on an emergency. But obviously when, you know, to somebody, I mean, somebody who, she, she, she contacted me a, a, a great deal. And obviously the timing was, was bad and it's nobody's fault. But I would love to have the ability to say, you know, actually there's coverage. You know, I mean, if possible, if not possible, not possible. But I mean, if we have a chance to make it just a little bit better, why not make it just a little bit better?
No, yeah, I'm not opposed. And I guess what it just comes down to is that I trust Gary and Terry to do what's best for the town. And I don't, I think that the psych board needs to get too involved. If I thought there's problems, then I would think the psych board should get really involved. But if a department's running well, if an office is running well, I trust them. That's, I guess, the, the moral of the story and.
I, I think, I think you're, I think you're, I think nobody would disagree with you. I mean, I think we all trust them. I, you know, again, I, I think if, if, you know, if, if we can, if we can, if, if it, if it get better, why not make it better? Any office, right, including.
I have a question. Can Gary as staff, does he have the same powers as he would as an assistant? He, I don't think he does, does he? You can't, no, so do we have to appoint Gary as the assistant at some point?
Yes.
If you want me to be able to do the things that you want me to do, yes, you would have to, I would have to be the assistant town clerk. And yes, you couldn't pay me thirteen fifty an hour.
And I'm sorry, I didn't catch the last part.
And, and yes, it requires a bump in, in salary.
Okay, so we'll do a calculation and see what you're currently getting and what is, and what is available. And then we'll put it on the agenda for a future select board meeting to have a, to have a, a discussion and vote on that matter.
Okay.
Terry, is that, is that acceptable to you? Gary, is that acceptable to you?
Will you advertise the position to make it all legal?
What?
So the question is, Terry asks a question. Do, should we advertise, if we were going to offer a job for somebody who's already existing in town hall, do we have to advertise it?
If you're hiring internally, why would you have to advertise it?
Okay, so. You're saying that if you hire internally, you don't have to advertise it. Justin, what are your thoughts?
My thoughts are that we, I don't, I feel like we, this is not really what I thought. We're, I'm not prepared to discuss this, I guess. I'm not prepared, I didn't realize this is where. No, that's what I'm saying.
We'll have more conversation.
But it is interesting that, so we don't have to do an ad now that, you know, the board agrees that internal hire, we don't.
I don't know. I, I have no clue. I have no clue. I barely hired anybody on the board yet, so I, I don't know. And, and when I, when things are on the agenda, and I'm not saying that we can't, but then I take the time to try to figure out and to know, but in this case, I don't know. I, and in the following days, I can, I can know, but it, it takes me time to do some research, so.
Fine, so that's okay. We're gonna, we will have a, we'll continue the discussion, okay? I, I, I agree with John Wine Gold that I think that if we do have somebody talented in town hall that is willing to ascend to the job, that we do offer that job to that person. However, we're not going to be making any decisions. And, and then we will, we will put on the, and at the same time, we'll be doing a calculation to see if, if we can actually afford you.
Just, just for the record, I'd like to say I have no problem with it being advertised. You know, whatever the board decides that, you know, is the right thing to do, I don't have any problem with it.
Okay, well, I, I, I appreciate that. All right, Mike and Susan have hands too. Oh, I'm sorry, Susan, I'm sorry.
I, I, Mike, do you want to go first?
Oh.
No, go ahead, Susan.
Um, so it, it seems to me you guys are, I mean, been listening to this discussion. A number of different things are being concatenated and I, I think it's important to tease them out. I, I sort of.
What was that word?
Concurrent, I feel like you have amalgamated several different issues as though it were one. And you've talked about them separately, but they keep getting dumped back into the same pot. So issue one is, the, when the clerk is on vacation, are there vitally important items that might need immediate attention? And how frequent is that? I, I suspect it's not frequent and I, I kind of, I don't know how much the diva attitude of I'm here now and I need this now because I want it now. Is it not uncommon attitude unfortunately, but that doesn't necessarily mean we need to cater to it? Unless that person wants to pay for a full-time salaried, so you know, in the advent that they have that thing that must be done now because I put it off and now I need it. I, I just, I don't know that it's necessary. So one question is, how many of these emergent events really are there that we're going to hire a second person for? The second issue is, is it smart to have, since there are so many qualifications required to do this job, is it smart to have a second person lined up? And when do you do that? I, I, I'm sure that town clerks leave that office from time to time all over the country as well as in Massachusetts and somebody you need to find a replacement. But, you know, considering that it's a part-time job to start with, having two people doing it, paying two clerk salaries would sort of seem like overkill for a town our size to me. I'm not opposed to it and I think that Gary should have all the training he wants. I just think that one incident doesn't a crisis make unless we're talking about a much bigger issue.
Right, okay. Point taken.
And Mike or Emily?
Uh, oh, I'm sorry, Emily?
Yeah, I just, you keep saying how more hours and more hours. Well, Terry, I mean, Terry and, and Gary are doing a fantastic job. But it's, she works twenty, under twenty hours and you're going to hire somebody for twenty-seven. What about the rest of the time? I mean, for seven, there's, that's only twenty-seven hours a week. What about the rest of the time if somebody comes in and wants something immediately? You know, you can't cover the whole time. If you want it, hire, you know, pay Terry to, for more hours. Pay Gary more hours.
So that's something that should be, should be brought up during a, a budget discussions.
Right.
Totally, no. And by the way, Susan, thank you. I actually did look up a concat, concatenate. No, it's important to, I need to expect, extend my vocabulary. Who knows if I'm. Job at some point. Yes, to link in a chain or series. Thank you for, for that. Okay, so we're going to, we're going to, we'll put that on a, on a, on a next agenda. Justin's going to do some research and we're all gonna ruminate on this concatenation of events.
I need to, I need to interrupt. Are we done with this issue?
I think we are. Are we, are we done with this issue? Justin has nothing further. And Terry, do you have anything to add?
Not about this, but like we're starting to bring the boxes out of the basement. So we need totes and I know, I want to know where to get the money to buy these totes.
Plastic totes?
Yes, that's the big thing, plastic totes. I didn't put money in my budget, but the assessors said they'd buy some for their.
How much, can you, can you come up with a determination of how many totes and how, how much that would cost and what the total amount is?
I mean, I could take it out of my budget and then go to the finance committee after. This wasn't something I.
Okay, that's fine. We just need a total, we do, we just need a total amount of how much it would cost.
Yeah.
So that we can vote on it. Cause we're just gonna vote, I'm not gonna vote, I'm not voting tote by tote.
Okay.
Okay, so we're just gonna have a total of totes.
So the money comes out of my account until it's.
Well, we'll have that, we'll have that discussion as well.
Okay.
Step one, how much it's gonna cost? Ten dollars, it could be ten thousand dollars, find out how much it's gonna cost so that we, so that we, how much, how many totes do you need? At what cost and what the price is and how much is going, how much it will cost and then we'll, we'll, we'll make that determination.
If everything from that room downstairs doesn't fit in my room because they took a third of it off, would you get a storage unit for outside? What, you know, a metal storage unit to put the things in that's mouse-proof and?
That's, that's entirely different, that's entirely different topic. Why don't we start with putting them in totes? Cause once you put them in totes, you'll know how many totes you have and. Cause once you put them in totes, you'll know how many totes you have and where these totes need to.
Okay. I just wanted you to know that a lot of people use them.
Okay, so step by step. So how many, let's figure out, let's figure out what we need and how much it's gonna cost. And then, and then do that transfer, and then we'll decide, and then we'll try to figure out where we need to, um, to put, to put them.
And if I need people to help Gary in the basement, may I get someone else to help him? To, to re-box the things, the records?
I've already offered to bring up the records up here so that whoever needs to, you can work in this one.
Okay.
Fine.
All right. Problem solved. We're gonna, we're gonna move on.
Um, I need to go back to the item for the Conservation Commission. I, I've gotten some very angry emails, um, apparently from the board members and the chairman saying that it was a unanimous vote to, we, you know, make her permanent, so.
Would the chairman care to send, to share in the, I just need a, we just need a, an email from the chair to the select board and the town administrator. All we need is one email. We don't need a, so, uh, just one email from the chair saying that they, it was a unanimous vote, and then we can do that.
I will see if I can get in touch with them.
So it needs to be from the chair of the Conservation Commission?
From the chair, to affirming that they had a, that they had a vote and it was, yeah, I mean, and it was.
This isn't urgent. She's still appointed as.
Right, she's still there. I know. I was thinking about hiring her as an assistant town clerk.
Okay, next item?
Um, uh, next item.
So, um, we originally planned to do the next all boards meeting as an open meeting law training. Um, the state has gotten back to me and stated that they cannot accommodate requests for training for individual towns. They have, uh, video links that we can do if you'd like. I can certainly arrange that. Or we can pick a different topic if you'd like. But there's, there's plenty of webinars that we could have everybody sit in here and watch if you'd like.
Well, and maybe, my first just intuition is that maybe we can, cause we had specific requests, like I remember from finance committee, right? Can we do an open meeting law training? So we could maybe just send out a link to every town official.
Yeah.
With those, uh, videos. That way, to the extent, like, there's some people in town who are experts on the open meeting law, right? And so they might.
Only, only in their own mind.
Might not wa. They might not watch, but me, someone who's new to the open meeting law, um, might benefit greatly from that ability. So everyone might be able to watch as much or as little as they want. Um, instead of having a meeting.
Okay.
You know, that's just my first thought.
Does anybody have a recommended topic for, as a alternate?
For the all boards meeting?
Yep.
A recommended topic for the all boards meeting?
You can think about it. You don't have to over today. And now that I know how to proceed on this, we can talk about it the next meeting.
Okay, cause I, I, you know, I wanna, I wanna think about that. There's several topics coming to mind. Um, on a more emergent, um, issue, um, the Town Beach Porta Potty. Uh, now, this is a really great example of, of the good folks of Monterey keeping us informed as to situations that, that may arise. Um, and we were alerted to the fact that the, um, uh, that the Town Beach Porta Potty was only being cleaned once a week and was, um, um, not becoming, was becoming unsanitary in their record, in their, in their. Um, uh, at the same time, um, the, um, the chair of the Parks Commission, since they have, um, operational authority of that particular toilet, um, was informed, um, by that individual and has, um, uh, and has stepped it up to a two times a week cleaning. Um, since we, uh, the, the beach is basically getting twice the amount of visitors, just like our transfer station. A lot more folks are staying in Monterey, um, which is great. The problem is that our services, um, sometimes are gonna have to be doubled, uh, to accommodate the extra, uh, people. Now, we will, um, we will, uh, take a look, and this is a decision of the, of the, uh, of the chair of the Park Commission as their, um, uh, their, their choice. So I, I'm assuming that's why it's on the agenda right now. Well, I added it only, I added it only because I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of the situation so that when we, um, so that in the future, when we're talking, when we're talking about budgets for parks, um, that we, uh, that we get that final number of, of how it's gonna impact us. Um, because we obviously need to keep, the beach is gonna be used, we gotta keep it sanitary. Uh, and, uh, um, I just want everybody to, to be aware of, our services are being doubled. Our, the requests for services are being doubled in this town. So we're, we're all, not exactly doubled, but, um, so, um, we may need a little, a step up in the future. Uh, and we'll see what happens with the, with the, with the population of. Uh, anybody has any, uh, uh, toilet-related comments or provided related comments? Nope. Um, okay, but anyway, uh, but anyway, thanks to, thanks to that, thanks to town resident for letting us know. And if anybody out there has any other problems, please just let us know and we'll, we'll direct them to the, or let the town administrator know. Direct them to the, the correct person to solve the problem. Uh, item number seven, approved minutes of, of June thirtieth, July seventh, and, and July thirteenth. So the first one, uh, June thirtieth, I think, um, you asked Justin for some time to take a look at it?
He has some minor edits on it.
Okay.
Which I sent to everybody just before the meeting or during the meeting.
Is that the hard copy? I obviously approve that it's, um.
Okay. The crux, the crux of the edits look like, um, uh, oh, well, an correction from the word recused from reused, um, which makes sense. Um, um, the word snow and ice instead of S and I.
Just one time.
Which is great because people need to know what S and I means.
I thought we agreed that documents to be discussed at a meeting were supposed to have forty-eight hours notice. We got these minutes this morning.
Many times, John, when they have edits and express an opinion of a member, I cannot send them to you forty-eight hours in advance.
Well, you sent them to, all three of the minutes to us at ten o'clock this morning. I mean.
We.
I sent them to you as a reminder, but you've had them for weeks.
Yeah, this one's, this one's been out there for a while, so let me just continue over here.
Alright, sorry.
Uh, added some language, um, um, in. Item number two, the addition of, uh, including death certificate, which is, which are important. And wait a week, did somebody actually say can wait a week?
Well, that, Justin thinks that most of the things a clerk does, including a death certificate, are important, but can wait a week.
Oh, Justin thinks that, okay.
Yeah, 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 okay. And Justin thinks that's staffing office every, I, from my recollection, I mean, it's, it's minor. But I said, including a death certificate, mostly just because that's what we were talking about.
Mm-hmm.
And.
Um, yeah, and I see that you, you changed the number four a little bit, um, that, again, your, this is your explanation, um, that you, you received an email from Don Coburn expressing an agenda items, our personal opinions on topics. And rather than mainly steer, stating the topics, Justin thinks that, um, and then I deleted, John accused Justin of taking direction from Don Coburn, Melissa noted which Justin replied that he is not. Why did you, um?
I don't think it's, I don't, just don't think it should be in minutes. That's all. Um, and the, what I said is a little bit more nuanced. I think, because I did take direction from Don in a way, because he sent that email. It's not like I don't take, I take direction from a heck of a lot of people. So I think the statements I made were a little bit more nuanced than just I'm not taking direction from certain people. Um, and like I said, I listened to, or I tried to listen to everybody and then come to my own conclusion, so. And I could have written that all out, but I just, I don't really think in the minutes that needs, that wasn't a vital, essential part of our meeting. That's all. I, I, if I'm wrong.
Well, I, I, you know, I, I guess, listen, uh, I mean, John, you said it, right? You said that you, Justin taking direction from Don Coburn and Melissa know. Did, did you say that, John, or no?
I think I said something to that effect.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of things that are said that are not in the minutes. Well, and I could, I could, but if I was gonna add my response, it would have to be a good forward of sentence, sentences, cause it's not as simple as Justin is not taking direction from Don Coburn and Melissa know. Cause I talked to John Coburn and Melissa know, and I do.
I understand that, but if, if I, if I, if I, if at this meeting, I said, you know, you drank out of my water cup. I accuse you of purposely drinking out of my water cup. Um, uh, it doesn't mean that it's.
Then it can be, John accused Ju, I mean, do you think it's an essential part of the meeting?
Well, I, I just think, I just think it's, I think, I think it, it, um, it memorializes sort of this, this idea that is unfortunate, but I, I think that, 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 you know, you can, you can take issue with something. Anybody can take issue with something. Obviously, you just take issue with the clerk thing. You can take issue with it without, without doing it in a manner that's.
I know, and we can memorialize it, and what we're doing is there's, if Monterey is a rock, there's a crack in it and there's a wedge. And every time we want to, we can hit it with the hammer and drive that wedge deeper and deeper and split people apart further and further. And I'm not accusing anyone in particular. I'm just saying, I think memorializing certain things that don't need to be memorialized is, is driving that wedge deeper and deeper. So my taking this out was because I don't think it's an essential part of the meeting. And I don't think it legally is required to be in the minutes as it not being an essential part of the meeting. And I don't think we should be memorializing things which will only separate the town further and further. Because I'm, I, like I said, when, when this whole thing came up. And I don't think I'm not taking direction from Don Coburn and Melissa know, because I, I do take a lot of direction from Melissa, who often informs me on things I need to know. So I do take, that's not true, that I don't take direction from them. Uh, but I take direction from a lot of people, so I just want it out. That's all. And I think it's fair to what happened, and I think it's transparent, and I, I'm just opposed to trying to divide people. That's all.
That, that's fine. That's fine. That's fine. Um, we've been, I, I, I listen, I get, I get, I get no problem with, with, uh, with picking out a lot of this, um, back and forth business. However, the last time we did that, we were accused of not being transparent. So the, the time is, do, is you, it's more of a, it's, you know, for doing analogies, here's the challenge is more of a scale. You want to be more transparent or?
I don't.
Or, 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 or make everybody seem like.
I don't think the requirement, I don't think the requirements of minutes includes, including every comment like that. That's my understanding of minutes. I could be wrong. I don't know. I'll take the fall for it. Uh, if.
Looking to take the fall for it, uh, it's.
If that's a lack of transparency.
No, no, it's okay, but I just wanna, I just wanna state that we, we, no, listen, I, I'll, I'll clean, I'll clean, I'll, I'll be happy to let that be cleaned up. Um, but, you know, again, I just, somebody, somebody. Again, somebody's gonna come up with this whole thing about the lack of transparency. So they can, most everyone on this call has my phone number and they can call me and, uh, anyone watching the meeting who doesn't have my phone number.
Fair enough.
Okay, alright, alright.
They know where to read.
Um, great, so I, I will, I will, um, it's fine. Um, let's, let's move on. Number five, uh, was not present at this time. Okay. Alright, the rest of it is, the rest of it is fine. So I, I will, I move to accept the minute of six thirty twenty-one, as amended by, um, Justin. Do I second?
Second.
Uh, there being a second, um, I vote yes. Yes.
I vote no.
I could have already known.
The ones of seven, seven are just you and, um, Justin, because John was not present.
Oh, but John may still vote no, right, John? Okay, um, so, uh, so these are the minutes of July seventh, uh, twenty twenty-one. I, I read them. I see that, um, there looks like, okay, in this case, you're changing.
I changed Copeland Page to KP Law just because they changed their name recently from.
Did?
Yeah, because Copeland and Page are no longer, um, not recently, like between that meeting and this.
Wait a minute, the two founding partners of, of Copeland and Page actually no longer work, work at Copeland and Page?
It's called KP Law. There's, on their website. They, they wrote a little bit about it. I think they're old. I think they may have even passed away. I can't recall exactly, but it is KP Law. That's.
Okay, yeah, just like Kentucky Fried Chicken is now at KFC.
And I said, with Jeremiah Pollard, just for clarification, and I just added the motion was, uh, second and approved two, two zero. I believe that's what.
And approved two, two zero. Yeah. Alright, there's no other changes. Alright, so I, I, so I moved that the, um, and, uh, that we accept the minutes of July seventh, twenty twenty-one. There's only gonna be, do I second? I vote yes.
Yes.
Okay, and since we're going to move on, there, that we only need two votes.
So the ones of July thirteenth were just you and John, and I thought you sent me any edits?
Um, I didn't really see anything that was a problem with that. John, did you have any questions or comments about?
I didn't, I didn't get a chance to look at those.
Minutes of.
It's only, what, July, what is today? The, what is today? I didn't look at those yet. So can we put those at the next meeting?
Okay, so I'm gonna table that for the next meeting.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, review mail and, and any correspondence to be sent or signed. I mean, I got a question to the board. I, I mean, um, does mail include emails that we receive to the board?
Doesn't it? I thought it.
I, I, I believe it does, so. Um.
Should we go over, the one that I can think of is John Silver's email that we got today?
Oh, so I got, well, I got another, we got another one from him on the twenty-first.
Um, that today's the twenty-first.
Right.
No, I.
Oh, did I get it? Uh, wait a minute, I got it on the, I didn't, I guess I got it on the sixth, when, what?
Okay, so, um, John Silver sent the communications to the board. Um, and he filed an open meeting law complaint. I believe it's against me. Although.
What?
No, see, oh yeah, specific person is Justin Maycock.
Where?
And that was for, on, on this, or on this digital copy, which was for calling the emergency meeting.
Specific person of your.
On June first, twenty twenty-one. So I guess we'll see, I don't think we have to do anything to the board other than see what the town agenda says. It's.
Well, actually, so.
Well, you have to respond.
Respond. So you have to, you have to respond, um, Justin. So for everybody's edification, um, um, uh, we received a email from John Silver stating that he has filed an open meeting law complaint against, um, Justin Maycock. Uh, if, Justin, if you, if you need, uh, let me, let us know if you need assistance.
No, I don't, I don't want to answer. I know what else to respond with, and then we'll see what they say.
Um, so that is, so that's one thing. And then I received, okay, let me, let me look up this exact date, so I don't wanna get it wrong. I received this Wednesday. We all received it Wednesday, the fourteenth of July, twenty twenty-one, from John Silver to the select board. Um, it's short, so I'm just gonna read it into the minutes. Um, dear select board, Katrina Fitzpatrick was absent from last night's finance committee meeting. Katrina was also absent from the start of the finance committee meeting on June twenty-ninth. The chair called her at home after admitting she was not aware that the finance committee had a scheduled meeting. Katrina showed up twenty minutes late. Last night, the chair did not announce that Katrina could not make the meeting, nor did the chair make any attempt to, uh, contact Katrina to remind her of the meeting and bring her on board. Katrina was elected to serve the community as finance committee member. She defeated Rebecca Wallen, the incumbent, and a very perf- She defeated Rebecca Wallen, the incumbent, and a very professional, capable colleague who served the town well for three years. Rebecca was always present at meetings. She was never a no-show. She worked incredibly hard and brought deep experience to her position. Um, ironically, um, Rebecca was present in last night's meeting. Katrina was absent. At last night's meeting, I made it clear that I would not participate in meetings in which the newest member of the committee was absent without notice. It is Katrina's duty to fulfill her obligation as committee member. In the future, I hope she will make a better effort to fulfill her role. The Finance Committee needs talented, dedicated, and committed members. Sincerely, John, signed Jonathan Silver, Finance Committee, Monterey. Um, uh, so, um, I'm not, I'm not sure what the, I mean
Well, I don't think there's anything for us to respond to because they're a separate elected
Right, so, there, there, exactly, there are separate elected, the Finance Committee is an elected board. Um, the Select Board has no, um, ability to make elected officials do their work or not. Um, I, I know I can say, I personally attended the last Finance Committee, um, meeting here at Town Hall and all three members, including Katrina Fitzpatrick, were present, and they got their, their work done. Um, I, um, I, I, yeah, I don't know what the purpose of this letter is, um, exactly for.
Well, he's notifying us, and now you read it because we have to, it's, uh, communication, but
What?
That's all right.
Yeah, so he's notifying us about this, and, and apparently he's notifying us that he really misses Rebecca.
Well, I think he's saying that the Finance Committee is having some issues. That's what I think he's trying to point out to us.
Well, so I guess, I guess the point of this is, is that in a board, in a three-person board, like the Finance Committee and like the Select Board, um, if one, my, my problem is, is, my, my concern is, is that if one, one member seems to be saying, well, another member's not doing their job, so therefore I'm not gonna do my job also. And, um, that, that, it doesn't, I don't really understand what, what that means.
I'm not gonna ruminate or concatenate on it because
Oh!
We, we're the Select Board and they're the Finance Committee, and I don't
Okay, all right, so no more concatenation
At least me personally, I don't think we have
Here, um, we'll just, we'll just move on. We'll just move on. Um, so are those the only two correspondence? Any more open meeting law complaints while we're talking?
I got a bunch of correspondence. I mean, are we gonna go over each correspondence? I mean, God, Emily and Michelle and, I mean, it's just, it's endless. It's completely endless.
I see, um Okay.
I think they're all public documents, aren't they?
This one was directed to the Select Board.
Is there a requirement to, to bring, to do this? Okay, then I don't think, at least personally, I don't think we need to read through it.
Okay, I just asked the board in advance of that, but okay, that's fine, that's fine. Let's continue then, shall we? Um, the Select Board Rules, Policies and Procedures Draft, um, can we, can we table that to the, uh, I moved that we table this at the next meeting because, uh, it's already 20 minutes after, um, after eight. Um, it's the last item on the, on this particular agenda before
Second.
The public, Don has a hand up. Oh, I'm sorry, Don, you have a hand up?
Are we at the questioning part?
Well, no, not yet, uh, we, we just had a second from Mr. Weingold, um, to table, uh, item number nine. So we're gonna have a vote on that, and then we'll open it up to the public at large. Okay, so, uh, you got a second from, uh, John Weingold, all in favor of tabling item number nine to the next, uh, Select Board meeting? Say aye?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes? And is, is that a yes from John Weingold?
Yes.
Yes, okay, all right. Um, so now we're in the, we're the, we're at the end. Um, uh, and public, uh, comments and questions from the public. Please be brief and no concatenation.
I'll be brief. Number one, the fact that you receive a letter does not mean you have to read the letter into the record. You don't have to be, do the political work of somebody. Secondly, I'd like to know from John Weingold, are you gonna dismiss the complaint you filed against the town? And if so, when?
I have no comment.
Are you gonna continue to maintain that action?
No comment.
Don't you think the people of Monterey are entitled to know whether you're gonna continue to sue the town you're supposedly serving?
I don't have any comment on a pending litigation.
Thank you, Stephen.
Okay.
Thank you, Justin.
Um, any, any, anybody else in the public? No? Sure? Okay, then I make a motion to adjourn. A second?
Before you do that, though, can we schedule the next meeting?
The next meeting is August 4th.
No, I'd like to have one next week, actually. To have the agenda items that I put on that didn't get on the agenda this time, be put out for next week.
Not, it can't be on Wednesday because I'm not available on Wednesday, and I don't, and I, I don't, quite frankly, um, we can address any kind of agenda items, uh, at the next scheduled Select Board meeting, which is, which is August 4th.
Justin, you don't wanna have a meeting between now and August 4th?
I'm fine going every week, I'm fine going every other week. I could do next Wednesday, now that I know Wednesday's at six, or Select Board, whether it's every other, every, I pretty much never schedule, nothing on Wednesdays at six. Assuming that we might have a meeting. So I'm more or less always gonna be open to a meeting on the next Wednesday at six.
I'm gonna be, well, I'm gonna be out of town next week, Justin.
No, that's, I'm just saying for me, just saying
No, I understand that.
That's all, um, so
I'm gonna be out of town next week.
Okay.
Entire week?
Uh, a good bulk of it, yes, sir. Um, and, and quite frankly, um, uh, none of the proposed agenda items seem to be emergent. Um, and therefore, um, uh, I, I believe can wait for our, our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is on August 4th.
Well, I think we should also consider having a joint meeting with the Finance Committee, because I think, I mean, it's a, you know, we need to get rolling on some financial policies and some other things that, it's a lot of work to be done, and, you know, meeting twice a month is really not cutting it.
So those policies are already being, being worked on, John, as I've told you several times.
No, we're gonna work on them with the Finance Committee.
Yep, so I
So I think that's more prudent than you looking at copying from other towns and
So the Finance Committee has a chair? The Finance Committee has a chair? And, um, uh, Melissa, can you reach out to the Finance Committee? Um, to determine their, um, their, their, their desire to, um, to work with us and when they would be available?
I will, actually, I talked to Michelle today and she said that she's not having a meeting for another month.
Really?
But I'll double check with her.
Complimentized.
Yeah.
Perhaps. Okay, so, um, uh, so, so there, there have been lines of communication open between the Finance Committee, um, Chair and the, and the, uh, uh, the town administrator, therefore, um, I think we're in good shape to have a meeting on, a next scheduled meeting on August 4th.
Okay.
Okay. Um, I consider it a matter of close. I'm making a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.